We'd like to call the order of the Pleasant Grove City Council on our work session this afternoon. And on this Wednesday, January the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. So we welcome everyone who has joined us here. We have all our council members. And a lot of our staff here with us, and we welcome the other city employees and the public that have joined us here this evening. We'd like to start out our first item tonight for our work session is the recognition of our Leadership Academy graduates.
Thank you, Mayor. We do a Leadership Academy usually two times a year. This is our eleventh group that we've had go through the academy. And in essence, what it is, is we read a book called Endurance about Antarctic exploration led by Ernest Shackleton. He was the captain of the boat. And they run into some peril and they have to figure out how to get home. This is in nineteen sixteen or seventeen. You know, they don't have communication and they're trying to figure out a way to get everybody home. And it's quite the, you know, quite the fascinating book. Well, as we read the book and we see some of the decisions and how situations were handled, we, we talk about Ernest Shackleton and kind of his leadership attributes. So after we read the book, we talk about the leadership attributes. We list them on a, on the whiteboard. And then each person in the academy picks one of the traits and then they train the rest of the group on that particular trait. And so it takes us about eight weeks to get through the course and something we've been doing for quite a while. I think if I were to add up all the employees that have been through it, we're probably over, easily over a hundred, maybe a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty. It's one of my favorite things that we do, but we just had a group finish up. And so we'd like to recognize them here in this work session. We have a certificate of achievement for them. So I'm going to call their name. They're going to come up and we'll give them their certificate. When everybody has their certificates, we'll have them line up in front of you and we'll do a photo. So. First off, Trevor Workman from our Public Works Department. You can applaud for everyone, or maybe you can just hold it till we get to the end here, if you just want to hang out over here. Melissa Cook with Community Development. She was, I think, couldn't be here. Megan Zullinger with our Rec Department. Is this Kyler's doing? Mandy Carson with Recreation. I believe she's gone today, too. Jody Walker in Administration. Jody was so excited to give her presentation to the group. She just told us so many times how excited she was to do that. I might be slightly facetious, but. Jason Poulsen in Public Works. Gail Connolly in Community Development.
Did you have it in the one side of the building or the whole side?
Yeah. Right there in that room. Okay, for those who don't know, part of City Hall has our, our heating out. And, and we're complaining because it's, I don't know what, fifty degrees in our building.
My goodness.
Well, okay, you read this book. And they're in Antarctica, twenty below with a, you know, sixty below wind chill. We're going to be okay over in City Hall. Charlotte Smith in our Library. Carl Nielsen in our Police Department. And Britton Tavettin in our Public Works. These are your Leadership Academy graduates. Let's give them a hand. Okay, now we're going to have you stand here in front of the council. If we can have the council stand up and squeeze in a little bit, then Kyler will take a photo.
I'll have you scoot in there, Britton. Everyone kind of scoot down. Yep.
That's a little discrepancy.
Well, they have to be shorter so they can see me.
Me and Todd next to the mayor. Perfect.
Congratulations.
Good work, guys.
Thank you. You guys can, well, some of you can enjoy the rest of the day. Others have to stick around.
And thank you, Scott, for heading that up and keeping that going. That is a good book.
It is. It's great. So I, I'm just going to say this. We have had one council member that has done the Leadership Academy, Diana Anderson. And. I think she graduated. I don't remember. We'd, we'd have to check the transcript on whether she graduated or not, but I.
I graduated.
Okay, you, I'm sure you have a certificate somewhere, right?
Okay, our next item, do you have anything else on?
No, just on to the next item.
Our next item is Scott's going to introduce our new employees.
So we're going to do this by department. So if you're a department head with a new employee here, if you'll come up. Go ahead, Sherri, if you want to start us. And then as soon as Sherri's done, if there's any other department heads with new employees, just go ahead and come up.
This person isn't actually a new employee to us, but she's a new full-time employee to us. Most of you know her. Stacy Martino. And we went through the whole process, you know, did interviews, everything. And she was, she actually did an outstanding interview. Afterward, I said, that was a masterclass in how to interview. I mean, it was, it was a very, very good interview.
And so what's your official position now, being full-time?
Yeah, title.
I think library coordinator.
Library program coordinator.
Library program coordinator. Okay.
Yeah. I'm still wondering if that's the best title.
Yeah, we'll work on it.
Executive library. Just throw that in there, so.
The only.
The only, one only. That's awesome.
For all intents and purposes, that's what she was anyway, but now she's getting benefits.
But she wasn't full-time before, right? Okay.
Yes.
Now we get paid for all the hours.
Yeah.
Don't tell you. Yeah.
Now, now you get paid for all the work you were doing before that we weren't getting paid for.
Which is what you do when you love what you do.
That's, that's right.
But can we have Stacy just tell a little bit about, in case, I know Steve might not know you, or?
We moved here almost twenty-one years ago. I've been an active member on the Arts Commission for about fifteen of those years. And running the concerts in the park for the last eight, getting ready to. Yeah, they are, we've got some great talent in the, in the valley. Getting ready to start the ninth year. My family and I have been running the Heritage Festival. This will be our seventh year. And that's the program we love the most. Got hired under the library almost six years ago. And the first week of March, two thousand and twenty, I was put in charge of children's programming. And we shut down a week and a half later and had our first Storytime video post on March thirtieth. And we've been running and reinventing everything ever since. And it's been amazing. Best job in the world.
We're lucky to have you.
Absolutely, lucky to have you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
The last question was, why should we hire you? And she said, because I'm really good at this.
She is. And all those other events as well.
We've seen, we've seen you do it.
Yeah.
It's also her whole family.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, this morning, her husband was helping us fix some toilets. So, yes. They, the family's amazing.
But beyond the library, those.
It's kind of a bonus. You get one of us, you get all of us.
We'll take it. But those other things you're involved with are all volunteer. So that's just awesome. Thank you for being involved. There's not a lot like you, so.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, I present McLean Cook in the Streets Division as a Streets operator. And McLean came to us via the Parks Department. And I'm, I'm going to ask him to introduce himself a little bit. And I have not prepared him for this. So get ready. Unlike many of our employees, more action and fewer words. But I'm going to ask him in his short time here, how many different tasks he's actually performed to exemplify some of the variability of the jobs from day to day that is performed. So if you'll introduce yourself a little bit and then tell us about the jobs that you've done already.
So like Neil said, I'm McLean Cook. And we just, we do all sorts of things. There's, every day is never the same. And so that's kind of what I like about our job is there's just all sorts of different jobs you can do and a lot of stuff you can learn towards it. But I've lived in Pleasant Grove my whole life and I love all the people that I work with. They're very skilled and very good at what they do. And Neil and John Goodman are very good at keeping everything together and, and just making sure everything's running properly and.
So I'm going to jump in. Have you done snow plowing?
Yeah. Yeah, we've done a lot of snow plowing so far and that was.
How about potholes?
Yeah, done some potholes as well. We, we've done all sorts of different things.
Have you cleaned any storm drains?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've done all sorts of things.
Yeah. It, it, it's a, it's a, it's a broad test. One thing that McLean has already accomplished, which is awesome and not as, as simple as it once was, was obtain his commercial driver's license.
Oh, cool.
And so congratulation to him on passing all portions of that with flying colors and, and moving forward with that. It adds a significant value to the city and enhances our safety to, to have those operators. Those are big, heavy trucks that they drive around in, so.
Well, I don't think most people understand the, the difficulty of snow plowing.
So you're, you're in a big, big machine, you're pushing a lot of poundage of snow and your tires are sometimes good and sometimes not good on, you know, sometimes you're hydroplating, sometimes you're sliding. So it's like, it, snow plowing is hard and we look, we don't live in a flat, we don't live in Amsterdam. We have hills, so you're not only pushing that snow, but you're pushing it down a hill that's not. I mean, you're making it safe for everybody else, but it's not so much safe for you all the time.
Yeah.
So what area are you plowing right now, by the way?
I plow from Six West to Canyon Road.
Okay.
I think we're making some changes.
Hey, that's a good rookie round, you know?
Oh, yeah.
That's flatter.
So, so I've known the Cooks for a long time, don't I? So I know your dad and I know your dad taught you boys to work. And I think we've got, we've got two, we've got two Cook brothers now, right? Your brother, Stetson. Good. Good hires. Glad to have you. You guys work hard. Thanks for all you're doing.
Thank you. Lucky to have you.
So how long has he been with Public Works?
He's going about three or four months.
I'm going on four months.
Okay.
But I started out, I started out in the Parks Department, working seasonal. And then got on full-time as a storm drain operator.
Okay.
So is the rivalry with like Streets and Parks similar to like the PD in the Fire Department?
Oh, it's as strong as ever.
As strong, okay. So like when someone, when you take someone from those departments, it just create, it continues, the rivalry continues.
Oh, man, Deion, Deion's foaming at the mouth back there.
The Parks Department's awesome. I love the Parks.
So you know how to rake asphalt yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Well, maybe I'll come by next time you guys are doing it. I'll certify you, okay? So anyways, all right.
Awesome. Welcome. We're, we're, welcome, welcome. We're glad to have you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Council.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item and we have a, we've, our city treasurers received an award and we want to recognize that, so.
So I'm going to just tell you a little bit about it and then Mike can tell you what he had to do to get the award, so.
Denise, this is really not a Chicago fan, Chicago Cubs award, is it?
Uh, no.
I'm not. I don't got anything to say.
We're actually, the only thing that Mike can, we agree on a couple of things. We disagree on football teams, but we do agree on the Cubs, so we can get along.
Yeah, it's a great team.
So. Um, so Mike Gorley, he's the city treasurer. He's been with us just five years. And so he has been, he's earned the Certified Public Funds Investment Manager certification from the Association of Public Treasurers of the United States and Canada. And so that program is designed to help treasury professionals with the confidence and knowledge to better manage investments on behalf of their municipality. So I'll let Mike kind of share what he had to do to earn this and just appreciate Mike taking that to.
This is my cheat sheet. It was a course over two days and about six hours. And then we had to pass a test. And let's see here. So to, to earn the certification, comprehensive exam on the following training objectives. Identifying and understanding investment options, how and where to buy investments, establishing internal controls and developing procedures, identifying and mitigating risk in portfolio, quantifying and reporting safety measures, understanding liquidity needs and yield calculations, managing and forecasting investments and implementing and monitoring strategy. So it's a certification that I learned about and I thought it would be good and beneficial for myself and the city to have me earn that. And then in addition to that course, I also passed the Advanced Certified Public Investment Manager, which was more in-depth and about another six hours worth of training, so.
Wow, great. Thank you. And what's really outstanding on that, you passed the test of the auditors, too.
That's right. Denise helped with that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, we'll now move on to our next item discussion on formal recognition award for citizens and employees of valor, courage, and service to our community. And we'll turn the time over to Steve Rogers.
Thanks, Mayor.
I, sorry, let me just jump in real quick. So we, we had a, I think Kelton telling us a couple of weeks ago about something that our, one of our officers had done. And Steve had emailed me and said, do we do something formally to recognize people? And we have in the past, but we've never really had a formal process. And so Steve asked to be on the agenda to discuss this with the council, so. Take it away.
Oh, I mean, that's exactly right, Scott. Thanks for teeing it up. I just, I, I think it's great that we have so many people in the community that are, one, committed to serving our community and doing a great job. And I just thought about that police officer. I know there's been other stories in the past. We had a, a former director who saved somebody's life at the rec center. And, and then I even thought about Kathy and her years of service. And I think that something that's great about our community is that people that stay here and, and live here and work here, love it here. And so I just, I was just hoping that maybe as a council, we can come up with a formal award, that we can, we can have a process where, where people can be nominated, the city council and, and the mayor, we can recognize those people like this officer and then have a formal plaque maybe displayed out here in the rotunda that the public can come in and see as kind of a record of, and then also keep a city record of the people that have received that award. I just, I've just seen so many people who are deserving of formal recognition because they've served our, our community in an extraordinary way. So that, that was it. That's all I wanted to propose to the council.
Okay, thank you.
That's a great idea, Steve.
Yeah, I like it, too.
Yeah, well, okay, let me just chase that for a minute. So if it's okay, then if, if staff takes this at this point, we'll start putting some stuff together to present back to you as council for you to officially adopt something.
Like maybe some criteria or something?
Yep, some criteria. I think the idea is we want to be consistent in what we do. There could be times where people are walking, hey, I helped an old lady across the street and that was something pretty amazing. I should have my name out here. So we, we need to make sure that there's something that's going to define that the best we can to have that process, but.
And maybe there's some other cities that we can look at.
I'm sure there's other cities that have other things that are a little bit, ours has always been informal. We had, I remember the Hartele guy that was doing the, the things up on the mountain with the lights and we recognized him. We, we recognized a few people, but we, we've never formalized the process, so.
Dushe and then the guy that was also there at the rec center to save.
Yeah, the, one of the other patrons, right?
It was they, I mean, we just had them come in and we just, so I think we do need to decide what it looks like and how we honor them. I like the idea of having a, you know, if it's even a quarterly and we just have a clock or something.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put some back together. In fact, maybe we can have it ready for our annual planning meeting on February ninth, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll move on to our, and run through our staff business. And let's start with Daniel. You want to come forward and, and tell us what's going on in Community Development?
Mayor Council, we've been busy working on a couple of, a couple of ordinances that we've been putting together. One of them, you guys are going to see it today. And also my front counter now, it's, it's completed as of today. We have a new, a person, a new employee that accepted the position, so we're going to be fully staffed. I think that person is going to start on Monday and probably you, I will bring her here with us so I can introduce her to the council. Other than that, I think we're, we're doing good. We're working on a process right now to, how to, and, and I'm excited to present this when we have a retreat, but we're working on a process on how to process business licensing. That's one thing that, that is going to take us a couple of months to, to work on it, but I'll present it to you guys when, when it comes out, okay? That's what we have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's do Public Works.
I, I never can go without complimenting the Public Works team on the work that's performed, especially right now. The snow plow team does a great job. And to compliment Mike and all of Denise's staff, Public Works has a lot of overlap with all of the departments. We meet with Denise a lot. We meet with Tina a lot. We meet with Daniel a lot with different staff members. And there's just a lot of overlap. And, and Mike's done a great job. Denise is doing a great job. Jody is implementing automatic meter reading with our new meters going in. There's a, a payment on the calendar, on the consent item. We've got eight hundred meters in the ground as of right now. Each meter, we take a, a number and a, an identifier to link that to the new account. We're also with new installs, putting that same technology in on culinary side so that the, the residents. It's not, it's not as much for the city's access as it is for the residents to have access to that data and have data-driven decisions made by them for their needs. This Saturday is part of a role that, that I have and Denise and Britton, who was here earlier. We're on the board of the Pleasant Grove Irrigation Company, a separate entity from the city in which we're just over fifty percent of the shares that we access and, and have representation of on that board. So I invite you all to come to that on Saturday at two o'clock. It's a public meeting, so if you're interested. But the process that, that they're going through is not unlike what the city's going through. We have aging infrastructure as an irrigation company and there are big projects on the horizon. With those big projects are big costs. There is an American Fork River weir project that's going to completely replace that. It's a seven and a half million dollar project to be able to measure that water coming out of American Fork more accurately. There's a pipeline project after that that's in there. And then the North Union Canal, which brings water in from the south end of town, from the mouth of Provo Canyon, is mostly controlled by entities who have piped their water. And that canal is likely going to cease to exist, starting from the mouth of the canyon in Orem and ending up into the south end of Pleasant Grove City. If that happens, then users that have Pleasant Grove Irrigation canal shares will not be able to convey water through that canal. And Linden is going to take their water through the pressurized pipeline and then into their irrigation ponds. They've approached the canal company to see if they want to participate to the tune of four hundred thousand dollars in that diversion. So those are big discussions. What I just mentioned represents about, well, seven million dollars on the weir and about a million dollars on the pipeline and the Linden connection. For five thousand shareholders, that's a lot of money. Linden also, or PGIC doesn't have the ability to get their own loans. So they don't have the option to bond or borrow over time. That's a one-time expense that each shareholder will have to bear. Now, the city's been anticipating that as a cost to our, but we have to build that into our assessment costs in the future, which is part of our pressurized irrigation system. And that's what that fee will go towards and currently goes towards. So that's a quick summary of what will happen on Saturday. Outside of that, we're, we're planning big projects. We're in the middle of big projects as well. I have mentioned the four chlorinators that are underway and have block going up around the four different wells. We're retooling a different well and we have the Boulevard well being installed as well. So a lot of good things happening, a lot of redundancy and a lot of safety measures being implemented there. Any questions?
Yes. Can you talk to, I've had some people ask me about the secondary meters that the state asks us to do. The cost, are you, are we putting them in and is this year that they have them, is this informational gathering type of year? Are we right now going off the original fees for secondary? And then eventually we'll gather enough information and have a, a new type of fee that, that you're going off or what?
That's a good question. I want to make one correction. The state didn't ask us to put those in. They mandated that we put those in. With that mandate came a funding opportunity that if we were to put those in before two thousand and twenty-five, excuse me, we could have up to seventy percent of those costs borne by the state. If we were to try and bear those costs, that would cost our users an additional probably fifteen dollars a month for that.
Well, I think if we waited till two thousand and twenty-nine, then they'd start fining us.
Yeah, that's correct. So, so we are currently implementing that. We are going to put the meters in and we're going to gather data. And we're going to be in a data gathering stage for probably a couple of years. We need to know what volumes exist and what uses are being obtained by the, a, a typical user and maybe an agricultural user. And then we need to present to you a fee structure that represents both a base rate and a consumption rate. Our intent is, is not to artificially generate additional income only to meet the need of the utility. So when it comes time for that, we'll do a pro forma and an analysis on the volume that we receive and the anticipated revenue from that volume. It's kind of tricky because when you're not paying for that volume, your habits are going to be a little bit different. And so we have to be really careful when we implement a rate that if people decide that they're going to change their habits and maybe reduce their use, that we can still meet the needs and the obligations of that utility. It's a standalone utility. It must operate on its own as an enterprise fund. So we can't take funds from somewhere else and put them into that. And likewise, we can't take funds from that fund and put them somewhere else. So it's a business model that must stand on its own.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Really quickly, lot of water. This has been a heavy, heavy, heavy snow. How are we doing on, making sure, on flooding?
Yeah, that's, one thing that McLean, we didn't get to is additional street sweeping opportunities. Yeah, that's, one thing that McLean, we didn't get to is additional street sweeping opportunities. So, uh, McLean has, has also added an additional, uh, employee to be able to sweep the streets and we've added additional efforts into that. We also last year, uh, took the opportunity to map out our hotspots where storm flooding or storm grates get inundated or blocked with leaves or debris. And we're extremely aware of those during these thawing events and we get on those really quickly. And to my knowledge, we haven't had any instance thus far due to the preventative measures and, uh, the quick measures of, of knowing where those are and having those mapped and, and very clear where those are.
Uh, maybe to answer Diana's, I just, I read a report actually today, we're, we're at a hundred percent. Uh, we were, we were, well, in one week, you know, in one, one, four or five days. We've, we were behind significantly, uh, going through December and then, and then part of January. But, um, as of like right now, it's about a hundred percent of where we kind of should be. So not last year, but.
Yeah, right, right down average, which is great. Uh, if we can keep up, um, we'll, we'll hope that we continue along that path. Like I said, it's, there's conflicting prayers because the snowplowers would rather not be up and, and out. And, I mean, if, if we plow till eleven and we start again at four AM and, and you have to travel, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes to your house, that's not a lot of sleep. Um, and so, uh, we're glad for the snow, uh, in the mountains, but hopefully it can come at the right time. And then when it comes in the spring, it can melt at a good rate.
And one more thing on the metering. And I've said this before, so, and I apologize, but when people were paying culinary to sprinkle their lawn, they were using two point two gallons per minute per acre foot. And when we went to a flat rate, it jumped to seven point seven gallons per minute per acre foot. So something happened in the mentality of the conversation of I'm buying it by the gallon and now I have a, I have a, a allotted amount.
Yeah, we're, we're.
And so when, when we roll out this, after we collect the data, and I hope that with the data, we also see if the, if there's leaks or things that we need to fix.
Absolutely.
But I, I want the mentality to be, um, logical. And, um, so whatever the education package is that we have to roll out at that point, then.
Yeah. Yeah, certainly, um.
Six times.
We're not gonna point to anybody, but, but there is abuse. There is no doubt abuse and neglect, uh, on the sprinkler side, uh, and we see it. Um, and, and hopefully we can balance, um, all of the nuances of the different, uh, uses and still keep it simple because it, it, it might seem like, oh, well, you can do a one-off here and, and by the inch of, square inch of property. Well, we have, we have nine thousand accounts in the city.
Yeah.
And so when setting rates, we have to keep it simple enough that, um, it's easy to understand, but yet complex enough to capture the nuances that exist.
So will we have, will you have autonomy in setting those rates? Or is there anything that mandates to you that they have to, there has to be a certain amount of money? It's just whether we can be profitable or not?
My, my, uh, mandate comes from you. And so.
Give us a recommend, we set the rates.
I will, uh, with our team and Scott and, and, and those involved, we'll analyze that data and, and we'll present to you a plan. Uh, but, uh, just as a word of caution, that plan has to meet the financial need of operations, assessments and, and other debts that are carried in that fund.
We'll have a recommendation for the rate.
Yeah.
I mean, we'll, we'll have a number for you to, which you want.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll, we'll present it, I, I would assume methodically from, um, you, you can go flat rate if you want, but we're gonna have to capture, you know, that. And I would recommend against that. We have the ability to measure it and, and then you can bisect it down to three different property sizes, which we do now. But then you can go into tiers, which we don't have now. You can go into, uh, an easy first tier or second tier. You can go three, you can go ten tiers. I mean, I imagine we're gonna get into a different property classifications, meter sizes, uh, and allotments in probably three or four tiers is what I would imagine seeing, uh, as where we're going. Um, fortunately, I've, I've had experience in rate setting, um, and we have others around us who have done that. And, and, uh, I think we can use the data that we get in the initial rollout. We, we can't, uh, fairly assess a fee to someone until everyone has a meter. I mean, that just wouldn't be.
When is that anticipated to?
End of 2025. So, um, I imagine that'll be about the time. We'll, we'll have probably a good sample set of, you know, twenty-five to fifty percent of the meters that I think we'll be able to use that data as a sample set, certainly, representative and, and extrapolate and bring forth, uh, a plan and a rate that ultimately you guys with each budget year will adopt.
So are you, are you hoping that we will be able to set a rate at, at the end of 2025? Or is there going to be an, are you going to gather information after all of them were installed and then?
I, I would anticipate around 2026, probably in, in February of 26, when we have the budget planning meeting that's scheduled similarly each February to finalize or come to a pretty close, uh, plan at that time. So about two years from, from now, I would hope that we would have a pretty good feel for where we're headed into the budget that's adopted in May of 2026.
Anything else, Council? I'm good, thank you. Thanks, Neil. David. What's going on in the HR world?
He answers annoying texts from me about benefits. Well, I'm, yeah, but I, I wasn't even commenting on that, but just thanks for all your help. You've been, you've been awesome.
You bet, thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, any questions? Don't hesitate, reach out. One, one thing I did want to talk about, just real quick, um, I, I love the, the idea, Councilmember Rogers, um, of doing some recognitions and some awards. Um, I'm happy to do a little more research, especially on the community side. Um, wanted to just let you know, um, some of the awards that we do as a city. Um, since about 2012, um, we have had a Team Member of the Year award. Um, the person that receives that gets a one thousand dollar cash prize. And in 2019, we started a program, um, to try to really show, um, employees our appreciation. Um, so we added a few more awards. We added a Community Service Award, we added an Innovation Award, an Exceptional Service Award and a Leadership Award. So each year we do a recognition event in the April, May timeframe.
It's one of the best events of the year.
Yeah, it, it definitely is. One of my favorite things to, to be at, for sure. Um, so we have a nice lunch and we get everyone together. Um, I think the last year's event, we had about two hundred staff members there, great attendance. Um, really nice event. We also do awards for years of service there. So anyone that's hit five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, um, et cetera, of service, they get a, a recognition for that. Um, so it's a great event, um, and the planning for that is gonna start soon. Um, the, the event is typically in April, May. We have a, an employee committee. Um, we typically get one representative from each department, um, try to get, um, coverage from, from everyone. Um, we don't want just the popular employees to be awarded. We really want to get, um, representation from everyone there. Uh, we take nominations from employees for all those awards. Um, and then, um, I send for Team Member of the Year, um, the, the Mayor and Council and then the executive staff are the ones that, that choose that. Um, so it's a great event, great awards, um, great help from, from the committee and, and putting that on. Um, I think something that we can definitely continue and, um, always open for, for more ideas if there's, um, other awards and ways we can recognize our employees. Um, I'm a, a very passionate supporter of that. We have some great employees here and, um, and I don't know that anyone feels there can be enough recognition or, or enough appreciation there. Um, but that's all I wanted to share today, thanks.
Thanks, thank you.
Megan. The heat has been on in the rec center.
Yes, the rec center, we've been rocking and rolling. Um, it was Fitness Fair on Saturday, which was super fun. It was my first experience with it, so yeah, Diana was there.
Craziness.
We had, I think, twenty-eight vendors. We had the most vendors we've ever had, so that's growing, which is awesome. Um, sales have been, actually, I just checked, we're literally exactly the same amount of sales right now as we were last year. So we're right on par with what we did last year. But, but yeah, Fitness Fair went really well. Um, Andy Vinkner, if you know who she is, she kicks butt, she's awesome. She does really good at these things and we love.
Literally, she just kicks.
Literally, yeah, literally. She's out there doing the classes too, kicking butt, but she's awesome, we love her. She does a great job in putting on these events and makes them run really well. So, um, that's been going really well. Obviously, we're headed into the new year, ready for all the big projects hopefully coming our way. Junior Jazz, uh, it continues to engulf our lives, it does for a while until that's finally over, but we love Junior Jazz. Um, yeah, so great team. I'm, I, I, it's, I'm excited for the new year. I just love the rec center, I love the community that we're a part of, so I'm excited for this new year and ready to hit it running, so. Any questions from you guys about the rec center and department?
Well done, that was amazing.
Awesome, thank you.
Megan, really quick, how much longer does the sale have?
Uh, through Saturday.
Okay, so are you expecting a few more sales?
Yeah, we, well, yeah, for sure. Uh, when we look at the comparison to last year's, we are, we usually still, we actually get quite a few on Saturday, the last day. But it's open online through midnight Saturday, but in person till the rec center closes on Saturday. So, so yeah, still, we're still staying busy this week, keeping those going, so.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thanks, Megan. How, oh, by the way, how's that table? Is that, have you been able to procure a table for the score?
Oh, I, I totally forgot all about that. I will follow up with Mandy and find out where the status is at.
I was there last night and thought.
What, what table are you talking about? Megan forgot about it.
Should've been more clear.
No, no, you're good, we were, we've been working on scoreboard, so that's, that took our priority. But yes, we'll get working on that table for sure.
Thank you.
Well, like the Public Works, we've been doing a lot of snow and ice removal. Last couple storms have been real fun, I don't know, it's just kind of crazy. Before we hit the storms though, we were able to get our, uh, concrete poured in two benches and out around the, uh, Mahogany Park playground, something that we were able to purchase through the Utah County Municipal Recreation Grant. We also had the Jacobs Family Foundation, uh, donate a generous fund to the seniors again this year. Um, and then we had a volunteer who, he, he did this last year also. He's been up on the Valley Vista Trail and he'll go up and groom it. He has a special machine that will go up and groom it and then the fat bikes can ride it. And a lot of positive things. The downside is, is he didn't get up and do it this last storm, so there's been like, when does the trail's gonna be done? But, but he, he does a great job for us. He does the, uh, tree areas where we, you know, where the snow's a little bit deeper and so.
Who is that, by the way?
I knew you was gonna ask me.
Just, what, if you think of the name?
I, yeah, I have his name, it's Aaron. He doesn't want to be known, but I can't remember his last name.
We don't care.
Yeah, he's just doing it as a service, so, so it's awesome. Um, I think that's all I had. We're just waiting for the, the weather to warm up so we can get the rest of the Christmas lights down. And we do it two, when it's too cold, then we start breaking the wires. So we like it to be in the forties, so hopefully this week and next week, we can get some of that done.
Okay, thank you.
Good job.
Thanks, Dion.
I think we lost Chief Brown, so.
He went to go get our food there, so we're, excuse you.
Okay. Well, Denise, do you have anything else for us?
Yeah, just onboarding stuff, working on budget, that's all it's about.
And Wendy, you've been here about a month here now, so.
I am, going well.
Okay. Oh.
You know, usually I have you go first, so thanks for, I, right over you, so have the library come up.
I, I thought I was doing you a favor by having you go last.
And Kelton's gone, Sherri.
So I thought I'd just tell you about the, uh, some of the events we've got coming up. We've got two, excuse me, two different, uh, programs, um, being done by USU Extension. They, they'll send out speakers to libraries. Um, they're doing a parenting ADHD students class. And then they're also doing a Couples Relationships course, uh, in January. We've also got our Winter Reading Challenge for teens and adults going on. And then we, um, on the twenty-ninth, uh, John Hilton, who is a BYU religion professor, I don't know if you're familiar, he has podcasts and stuff, but he's actually coming and doing a magic show with his son.
Awesome.
And we also have a Lego building challenge coming up. And every, um, Saturday morning at ten thirty AM, we have movies in the library. So, we have, um, let's see, coming up, Cool Runnings is on the twentieth.
One of my favorites.
It's a fun one, so there you go. Any questions? No, okay.
Thanks, Sherri. Tina, do you have any?
Um, I've just been working on something that I think will be of interest to you. We're, um, St. John Properties is in negotiations with UDOT to acquire some property for that new frontage road between the freeway and their property. And so, uh, on the next agenda, there is a, an agreement that we need to enter into with UDOT and St. John Properties with regard to preserving our access. Um, there's a, a small area that UDOT is requiring to be an actual city street off of that proposed frontage road. And so the agreement, um, will, you know, address that issue and a couple other issues with regard to maintenance and in perpetuity, who's responsible for those things. But I thought it might be interesting for you guys just to know that that, um, project with UDOT is, you know, continuing to move forward and eventually it will alleviate a lot of the traffic issues down in that area, coming off the freeway and going on the freeway.
Okay, thank you. Kaita, I know you're just all excited about the legislature firing up yesterday.
Super excited. I hope some of you had an opportunity to go today. I know Councilmember Rogers did, I don't know if anyone else did. Yeah, keeping our relationships with our legislators is important, so reach out from time to time just to see how they're doing, especially as bills come out and we may agree or disagree with, with what's going on. But Mayor, myself and Tina will keep you advised on what's going on up there. Uh, we're currently working on consolidating some of our IT and internet contracts. Right now, the city's been using Comcast and some other, um, different third parties and we want to bring those all under Utopia, just because it's easier to be under a sole provider, if you will, and the cost is just cheaper. So we have four locations that we're currently trying to get contracts for, uh, one of which is the rec center. I know they've been having some issues with, uh, internet connectivity. Um, so those contracts will be coming, uh, your way in the future. And then we have other monies set aside for parks as far as restrooms and security at those restrooms. And those contracts will be coming forward as well.
Sounds good. Yeah, after, it's, uh, after talking to our Senator and our representative at lunch today and, uh, after even Scott left, it's gonna be an interesting session because there's a lot of weird stuff up there that may come out and hit us there. A lot of bills already prefiled, so it's, we'll see what they do to us. Pretty typical, yeah. You want to add anything on from our meeting, your meeting this morning, Scott, you and Councilmember?
And give a quick report. Um, uh, first of all, for our, our meeting on February sixth, we don't have a ton of agenda items just yet to report on. Tina mentioned one that, uh, that we'll have on, uh, on the agenda. I think we have, uh, five Tuesdays in, um, January. So I don't think, I think our next meeting will be in three weeks instead of in two weeks. We do have our, uh, annual planning and budget meeting scheduled for February ninth. Um, I think right now our venue's probably gonna end up being at the Fire Trading Station where we've done it. That, that room tends to work fairly well. If there are thoughts on moving it somewhere else, just let me know and we can.
If there are thoughts on moving it somewhere else, just let me know and we can. The venue doesn't necessarily matter to me as long as we can, you know, sit down and be able to go over the things that we have. Yes, we did have, it was Local Officials Day up at the legislature, which is comprised of a, a one-hour meeting for a legislative update. And then we have lunch with our legislators. So, John Hawkins is our representative, Senator Mike Kennedy. And had, you know, good discussions with them. It's, we want to make sure they know who we are, they do. We've had a lot of interactions with them over the past few years. There are probably two major issues at least that we are going to be keeping our eyes on as a city. One of them is, there's a lot of issues with affordable housing. The state legislature wants to figure out ways to legislate that to bring the, those housing prices down. It's a pretty complex issue. I think Steve and I talked about, I don't know, thirty minutes on it on the way home, just how, how complex this issue is. So, there are already, I think, two bills that have been filed. There's rumblings of three other bills that are going to address this. I think most legislators are willing to work with cities on what the solution is. I think there are some legislators think that cities are the problem with the cost of housing, which is just not fair and not correct.
There's a hundred thousand permitted permits in the state.
Yeah, there's over a hundred thousand entitled units right now that are just waiting to be built.
Already permitted.
Yeah, already permitted, so. And that, we, we have plenty of arguments as a city, but I, sometimes with issues like this, the facts kind of get in the way of what we're trying to get accomplished. So, we're, you know, we're, that's going to be one thing that we'll be paying a lot of attention to. That's priority number one on the league's radar. Particularly to Pleasant Grove and really for most cities, the transportation utility fee, there's been talk of legislation. I think for certain groups, they would like to see the transportation utility fee legislated out so cities can't even do it. I think the league has done a good job of preserving the transportation utility fee. There might be some guardrails, like having a study, like having a dedicated fund. This might sound familiar. You know, things that we have already done as a city and which qualified us as a fee through the State Supreme Court. So, if they're going to set guardrails on that to say that cities are required to do those things, we're okay with that because we've already done that. So, it remains to be seen exactly what that looks like. But that will be something, again, we'll be keeping an eye on. We, we want to be able to keep that fee intact. It's about one point two million dollars a year of revenue to the city, specifically earmarked and dedicated to, to road maintenance. So, that's, that's essentially my report. I, I do want to add, as we had our employees here for the Leadership Academy and Mike Gurley up here with his certificate that he received. We, we have employees that care about this city and they want to be better at what they do. We run the gamut with all sorts of different services and all different types of employees and personalities. And just like any organization, we're not any different. The beauty of, of local government is we get to see the fruits of our labors because they are right out there in the community. And that's probably one of the things, at least, that drives me, is that we can see the impact that we're having. So, and that's not only staff, that's council as well as we, you know, move forward on projects and things that we're doing. But I just want to recognize the dedication of our employees and their desire to become better at what they do, their desire to provide the exceptional services for our residents. So, that, it just was a little bit of a reminder as we were sitting through our work session today. So, I just wanted to share that so you know how I feel. And I don't know if any employees ever watched this, but we'll be sure to make sure they feel that as well as far as what we think. So, that's it, Mayor, thank you.
I just wanted to add to your report, Scott, that we did have conversations with both our Senate and House representative. And I think that they understand our interests and are pretty much aligned with what we want to accomplish on those two issues, the utility fee and also on the, the housing issues and the, and some of the bills that have come up. So, we had some good conversations with those representatives at the, at the meeting, so.
I just, I was impressed, you know, half the group in the ballroom was the youth councils from different cities. Not all cities have them, we don't. Maybe something we want to look at in the future and, and getting that going because it's a really big thing. I know Linden's really old time in theirs and it was.
Spanish Fork, I know they're very involved.
Yeah.
We used to, but our, our youth court lady is also running Strawberry Days, so that's a lot.
Oh, okay, so that's where that went to the side there.
I think she still does that, but.
So.
We may want to look at doing, at doing that, because I, I do love that program.
So, we did have the mayor, I mean, the governor did come and address us and he had, so he had all those youth in there. And boy, he. He really beat up on social media. And also, he says, he gave up cable news channels ten years ago. And he says his life has been better. His relationship with his wife has been better. Everything has been better, so.
Lost twenty pounds?
He, he, yeah, lost twenty pounds.
Regrew his hair.
And he say, he, he recommended that for everybody, just cut, get off that.
Probably very smart.
And also that, you know, he says, hey, social media, they're, they're just there to make money and it's a cost in the state. And we've got a, a lot of, we've got a crisis going on with our youth and, and some of, and our adults on usage of social media. So, he just threw that out and kind of, and I says, wow. He, he got applauded pretty good on that, so. Anyway, so it was a great day, other than a little bit snowy this morning, so. Anyway, with that, we, I think we've finished our work session, so I asked for a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.